If you want to stay off camera, that's great. The rest of our participants, you can kind of stay, I guess, off camera and on mute until it's your opportunity to jump into the meeting to either participate as a presenter on behalf of the applicant or to provide testimony. So, all right, thank you. Okay? Get started.
Welcome, everybody, to the City of Fairview Planning Commission. It is April 22nd. Can I get a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Do.
Here.
Commissioner Mondario.
Here.
Vice Chair Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Hooper.
Here.
Commissioner Pearson.
Here.
Commissioner Walters.
Here.
And Chair Bollman.
Present. Thank you. All right. Do we have any citizens wishing to speak on non-agenda items? Nobody? All right. Has everybody read the minutes from February 25th?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Do you have any comments, questions?
No.
No? Can I hear a motion?
I'm moved that we accept the minutes from February 25th.
My second motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second to adopt the minutes from February 25th. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Minutes are adopted. All right. Public hearing. A public hearing in the matter of application 2025-10-DR-CUP-VAR is a request for site design review, conditional use permit, and variance approval for S&amp;S Petroleum to develop a 15,000-square-foot two-story office building at 255 Depot Street in the light industrial zone. The planning commission's decision in this matter must be based on the applicable criteria as set out in the Fairview Development Code. The applicable criteria will now be read by staff.
FMC 19.80, light industrial, 19.162, access and circulation. FMC 19.163, landscaping, street trees, fences, and walls. 19.164, vehicle and bicycle parking. 19.165, public facility standards. 19.400, administration of land use and development review. 19.413, procedures type three. 19.424, site design review. 19.440, conditional use permit, and 19.520, variances.
The hearing will be conducted this evening as follows. One, a presentation of a staff report on the proposed application by the planning staff. Two, a presentation by the applicant. Three, testimony in favor of the application. Four, testimony in opposition to the application. Five, any neutral testimony or questions from the public. Six, a rebuttal by the applicant to issues raised. Seven, any final questions from the planning commission. Eight, close of the public testimony. And nine, discussion and deliberation by the planning commission. If the hearing is continued, the motion by the planning commission setting a time and date certain for the next hearing will be the only notice you receive of that hearing. If you wish to testify this evening, please come forward at the correct time and state your name and address for the record. Testimony will be limited to three minutes each. If you are submitting any written materials, please state the nature of its contents and provide a copy to the city. Each item submitted this evening will be provided an exhibit number for purposes of maintaining the record. We ask that members of the audience refrain from comments or gestures during public testimony. The commission may, at its discretion, entertain additional questions or testimony prior to the close of the hearing. Any person may request the record be left open for all parties for a period of at least seven days. Following the open record period, the planning commission shall provide a rebuttal period for all parties and then a seven-day period for final arguments for the applicant only. No additional comments or questions will be accepted after the public hearing is closed unless the planning commission decides to reopen the hearing. In addition to preserve, in order to preserve an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals, an issue must be accompanied by statements and facts sufficient to afford the planning commission and the parties an opportunity to respond. All testimony must be directed to the applicable criteria. Redundant or irrelevant testimony is discouraged. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the planning commission to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. At this time, I would like to ask members of the planning commission to disclose any ex parte contacts bias for conflicts of interest. Please disclose the nature of the ex parte contact bias for conflict of interest for the record. Anyone?
None.
Where a commissioner has an actual conflict of interest, state law prohibits voting or participating in any discussion or debate in the proceeding. Does anyone wish to object to the impartiality of any planning commission member? Anyone? No. Anyone on the screen?
Good evening, commissioners. The item before you is the Depot Street office building. This application consists of three different parts. First is the site design review aspect. This is for the development of a 15,000-square-foot two-story office building with off-street surface and garage parking spaces. A conditional use permit for the professional executive and administrative offices within light industrial zones are considered a conditional use, as well as a Class B variance to a reduction in the amount of required long-term bicycle parking spaces on-site. This is a site location. It's outlined in red is the total site itself, which is a pretty long and narrow strip of land along Depot Street, right across the street from Fairview Elementary. The area in red is approximately the site location where the office building will go. All of the existing uses of the other office building, maintenance shop on-site are going to remain. There's no other changes to anything in that property other than what is generally going to be in red over there. Here's an image of the site location itself, as it presently looks. There's some trucks parked on-site. It is fenced with a chain-link fence, and there are vehicles parked along Depot Street on the north side of the road there. As I mentioned earlier, these are the applicable criteria that were used to evaluate this land use application. For the notices, referrals, and testimony, notice was posted, notice was sent to adjacent properties within 250 feet of the site, and notice was posted on-site, as well as a notice posted in the Gresham Outlook. Application was sent to the Fairview Public Works Department, as well as Gresham Fire and Emergency Services. By noon today, we had no written testimony received. So I can go over to the review criteria at this point. So for the light industrial zone, professional executive and administrative offices are conditional use. The proposed use is for an office building that will have a parking garage, the lobby, open and private offices, break rooms, and other amenities for those employees, and that all requires a conditional use approval. Here's an image of the overall site plan for the site, so you can see that the proposed office building is highlighted in that gray section there. It's a two-story building, about 15,000 square feet. The left portion of the building, closest on the western portion, is actually a parking garage on the first floor, and then the office spaces are above that, and that's going to be fully enclosed with automatic gates to let people in the parking garage. The western portion of this development area is the surface parking spaces, and that is also going to be enclosed with a fence and swells with an electronically operated gate to let people in and out of the parking lot. This particular site has no applicable setbacks for this building. It's approximately 10 feet from the front property line and 45 feet from the eastern property line along First Street. The height is going to be 32 feet tall, and that meets the requirement, since the maximum height for this is 45 feet or no more than three stories. Here's an image of the south and east elevation, so you can see that the building's a two-story office building, and there's some different design features. The main entry area contains an entry vestibule with large windows. It's recessed in a few different places to help break up some of the continuity of like a very long facade along Depot Street and made up of several different finishes. And here is the north-facing and west-facing, so you can see on the west elevation, there is that garage door that enters the parking garage on the first floor. On the north face, it is just a large lot of windows, and there's also a exterior patio space on the northeast corner of the building for the employees to use. Now going into the access and circulation aspect, the proposed office building will have vehicular access from Depot Street. The length, the distance from the intersection of First and Depot to this driveway is over 50 feet, so it meets our access spacing standards for driveways to intersections. There is going to be a concrete sidewalk that you can access the building, and as the extent of the green line on the map there is actually what is going to be improved sidewalks. So the sidewalk currently ends kind of halfway down past the existing office and maintenance building, and it kind of just drops off, so the applicant's going to be doing street frontage improvements and including stretching the existing sidewalks with planter strips and street trees all the way to the intersection with First Street. The traffic study, we did require a traffic study. They had provided a trip gen report, which the proposed development will generate 17 morning peak hour trips, 17 peak hour trips in the evening, and an average of 124 average weekday trips. For the landscaping, street trees, fences, and walls section, the applicant submitted a full landscaping plan showing that over 10% of the overall site will be landscaped. In addition to the nine street trees that they're providing, there's going to be several parking lot trees, ground cover plantings, and other shrubs on-site, as well as a grassy lawn on the east end of the property. There's a few existing trees that are on the site, none of which are going to be impacted by this particular development. All of the trees will remain on-site. The, like I had mentioned, a variety of native trees, shrubs, ground cover plantings, and they are also proposing a stormwater facility with plants that are appropriate for that at the north end of that parking lot. The proposed building will be connected to the existing sanitary sewer and water lines in Depot Street, and like I had mentioned, they will be treating their stormwater in a new facility at the north end of their parking lot. For the vehicle and bicycle parking, this property is within that half-mile of Halsey Street, which is our frequent transit corridor, so we technically do not have any minimum off-street parking requirements. The proposed development will include 27 spaces. Three of those are going to be ADA spaces, and I believe five of those 27 spaces are going to be within the parking garage that's enclosed. There is a minimum of three short-term bicycle parking stalls for the site. The plans show that there's going to be four spaces located near the front of the building, so that condition is met. So the variance aspect of this application is a Class B variance, which allows applicants to seek a variance to biking, bike parking requirements if they can prove that there is a lesser need for more bike parking spaces. So our current standards per se that you shall provide bike parking spaces as a ratio of one per space, one bicycle space per employee. This proposed development will include 10 long-term biking stalls. The applicant stated that approximately 15 people are going to be working in this building. We feel that the 10 long-term bicycle parking spaces plus the four short-term spaces are adequate for this location and its building users. It's over half a mile from the nearest Tri-Met bus stop. There's not a ton of bicycle infrastructure in the area, and given that the applicant has provided a fenced parking lot as well as a parking garage on-site, most users of the office building are probably going to opt to commute here by vehicle, so we felt that a reduction of a few long-term bicycle parking spaces would be appropriate for this For the conditional use permit, there's a few different use criteria. This typically has to do with how appropriate is the proposed use with the surrounding adjacent neighborhood, and given that this is a uniquely zoned light industrial area, kind of in a primarily residential zone across from elementary school, we felt that the site being used for an office building doesn't create the type of, you know, negative impacts on the surrounding neighborhood that you would associate with other light industrial uses, so we felt that that standard is met as well. We also found that they, you know, are going to be enclosing the property with a fence, the parking garage will be screened from site, there will be street trees, additional landscaping, and they're going to continue the connectivity of the sidewalk through the site, so we felt that that would add visual appeal to the building's frontage as well. The reason that this is getting site design review at a type-three level is because of the size of the building. Anything over 5,000 square feet automatically becomes a type-three application, so all of our noticing and processing requirements were followed towards that. We've reviewed this against all the applicable criteria for this use, and we feel that staff, that we can recommend approval of this application. And like I had mentioned, we feel that it meets or can meet applicable city codes and requirements, provided that all of the conditions of approval are met. And then your four alternatives are to approve the application based on the findings with city regulations and conditions. You can modify the findings, reasons, or conditions, deny the application based on your findings, or continue the public hearing if more information is needed. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you.
Do we have a presentation by the applicant?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jeff Brumming Gill. I'm principal with Livermore Architecture and Engineering. We have a few other members of our team that are on Zoom with us this evening also. We don't have a presentation for you. I think Alex did a great job of explaining the project, which we are very excited about, and we think it will lead to positive progress. Very much.
Thank you.
Do any other, do any members of your team who are on Zoom wish to participate at this time?
We could ask them. So Rod Schreckengost is the owner's representative. Philip Pitsenbarger is our project manager. He's, I'm not sure if he's going to be able to join for the whole time. And Jeff, can you ride along?
Yeah, this is Rod Schreckengost. I don't have any comments this time. Looking forward to getting this building done in the City of Fairview.
Okay. Thank you.
This is Philip. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm the project architect. Sorry, I couldn't be there tonight in person. I think we are pretty excited about the design of the building, the materials that we're using, and the integration of landscaping and the sustainability features like the bio-swell and native plants, so we think it's a good design.
Oh, we lost the audio when we gained the video.
Yeah, this is weird on my phone. So yeah, we're just looking forward to it, and hopefully everyone likes what we're doing.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Meetings that have Zoom components. All right. I am prepared to move on unless somebody else on the team needs to speak. Do we have any testimony in favor of the application?
If anyone has filled out a little testimony slip, you can bring that to me, and I'll bring it to the chair.
Oh? All right. Testimony in opposition to the application?
Can we just ask questions?
That is later.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Wasn't sure.
All right, yeah, questions are later.
Yeah. If you just have some questions, you can speak under the neutral comment section. That's my next. Okay.
Because I don't know if I'm opposed or approved, because I don't, I have, the questions are not answered.
Well, unless somebody is vehemently opposed and wants to speak right now.
Okay.
We can move on to neutral testimony and questions. All right. What?
I'm just requested you speak into microphone. My hearing aids don't work in here.
Yes. And as a reminder, please state your name and address for the record.
Of course, my name is Lori Bennett. I live on 60 Depot Street, which is right on the corner of First and Depot, so we're going to see the building the most. But I was curious, two 15,000-square-foot building, is that multiple offices, multiple companies, or is it one company with, because I heard conflicting information. We're going to have a huge parking space, but only 15 people in this 15,000-square-foot building?
Good questions. All right. And the applicant will have a chance to answer those questions.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
I'm just curious as to why they decided to put the building on the First and Depot side instead of down where most of the, like, the school play area and the other building is, opposed to the living end of the Depot Street?
Okay.
Where all the houses are?
Okay.
Just as curiosity.
I see the applicant writing down now, too.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. That's the only questions I have.
Okay. Other questions?
My name is Rob Carlson. I live in 40 First Street, Fairview, and I heard Mr. Lopez say, and please correct me if I'm wrong, scientific building?
No.
Or was that, did I miss, just misunderstand?
It's the uses for an office building, like administrative offices, not scientific.
Oh, okay, okay. I didn't know if we were moving monkeys around. Just wanted to make sure. The other thing is, I did have some comments about, or questions, concerns about parking. I understand they're doing all in-house parking right there, but if we could go back at some point in the, sorry, I'm not used to coming to these meetings, but the second or third slide you showed, showed the parking on Depot, the north side, 18 to 20 vehicles. All of those vehicles belong to teachers or faculty staff at the school. So, and we live there, I'm sorry, I live just next to Lori, right? And so what happens is, my beautiful, wonderful wife is on Zoom, she brought this up, because she's there every day, she watches, and what happens is, they have the parent lane right next to the school, right? So that keeps two lanes of traffic free for everybody else. What happens is, all of those cars are going to have to go somewhere, unless that's off-street parking, the same position they are, right facing due north, right? So I don't know how that parking is going to be set up on Depot, but I just wanted to make that aware, because, you know, you guys don't see what happens. I mean, those 18 cars are one of the ten, somewhere.
Okay.
So I don't know if there's capacity on the west side of the school, right? Because there's another parking lot on the west side of the school. I don't know if there is capacity during the day there for that. I know that on Main Street, there's not, that's plugged up during the day, right? I know the main parking lot right there in the corner of, oh, that'd be South and East, that parking lot's plugged up, so I don't know if, Mr. Lopez, if anybody's done a study on what there is for parking down there, but it does look a little bit jammed up already in the way all the, you know, the schematics look, it looks like it may be possible that an issue there, so just thought I'd bring that.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have other questions?
Well, my name is Ryan Jorge, level 35 Street, 7th.
You may sit.
I'm on Seventh Street in Fairview. All those trucks, there's a good slide, a good slide to stop on here. All those trucks you see there, that's the company I work for, and we just kind of got that notice one day on our fence, so. I work for Clancy Transport, and we run, you know, sport to the Phoenix, Depot Outlet there, travel the last 10 years there, so we're just kind of curious of when this is going to be happening. How is it, how are we going to pop that going? Is this just to be set in stone?
Good questions.
I have no idea.
All right.
I haven't signed by this, so.
Oh, okay. So your company has been using this piece of land for parking?
Yeah, those are trucks, and, you know, actively, they're not just stagnant trucks or, you know, they're moving in and out, those trailers you see in there.
Okay.
Daily basis, so, yeah, that's our operation.
Interesting. Any comments?
I have a question for you. Is that fenced area, is that on the far west end of that lot that was outlined in red?
No, I believe that's a SAS, it was a trucking, two different trucking outfits.
Okay.
It was a petroleum, as I said, the company that is putting that building in there.
I thought it was one parcel with one owner.
So the photo on the screen of the trucks in that fenced-in area, are those your company's vehicles?
Correct.
Yes.
They're rooted in that property.
Oh, okay.
That's on the corner of Depot and First.
Okay. So your landlords didn't tell you that they were going to do this?
This is a kind of over, might help me submit here to figure out what's going on.
Okay, well, that's an interesting question. Okay.
So just curious if, yeah, if this is all set in stone, and if it is, and what is it going to happen? Of course. Excuse me, huh?
I saw the applicant writing some notes, so they will answer at some point, and we'll discuss that. Are there any other questions?
When and the app?
Okay. Does anyone else have a question? No? So a rebuttal by the applicant to issues raised. Yes?
I'll try to answer all these as best I can. So the first question about the size of the building and companies, so our client is S&amp;S Petroleum, and I think they may be coined by Sierra Enterprises for their ownership of the property. They purchased Leather's Fuels, which was previous owner of the property and occupant there. They're a company that owns service gas stations, convenience stores in the northwest of California, so they've kind of expanded their operations. This building is for their administrative operations, which currently exists on the site. This building is for their administrative operations, which currently exists on the site. There's an office building there and they basically have run out of space. They're kind of outgrown their current facilities. And so this new building is to accommodate their administrative staff. And 15 employees is what the owners have estimated they'd have currently. They anticipate some growth. So that's why the building is sized the way it is. Also, there's quite extensive executive facilities in the building too. So there's a little bit of extra square footage in there for that. So that might be why the building's a little larger than whatever occupants.
Oh, good. I appreciate that. Yeah, there are more questions, right?
Yeah. And then the location of the building on the site, the east side versus the west side. I guess a couple of reasons for that, that SNS, I believe, still uses the west side of the site for their operations. And the east side was identified as the best location for the building from an operational perspective. At one point, they were discussing, you know, possibly tearing down the existing building, replacing it or something like that, but that option never proceeded. So I think also, you know, just in terms of an urban design perspective, the east side of the property is a better location for the building. The scale of the building with two stories and the architectural character we have kind of is mirrored across the street with the school. And so we are emphasizing the corner a little bit more than would be done if it was further down, closer to the residential areas.
Okay.
And then as far as the question about parking on Depot Street, I did notice that it seemed like there were a lot of cars parking there. I didn't realize that was necessarily teachers that was parked in there. The street improvements are being done to meet city requirements. So we have to put in a curb and planting strip and sidewalk to meet the city requirements there. And I think that the parking, if I'm not mistaken, a good portion of that is actually on our client's property because of where the property line is located based on our survey. So I don't know the history of how that came about. It seems like kind of an informal parking arrangement. Maybe that's happened over time. But what we're proposing to do there is to meet the city requirements for the street improvements that need be done.
I'm just wondering, would it be possible to have perpendicular parking instead of parallel parking?
No, unfortunately, in our city's transportation system plan and our street design standards on that type of streets, parking is parallel to the street. I mean, there's really just not enough width in that roadway, in the right of way to provide the sidewalk, the landscape strip with the street trees, and then to do like 90 degree kind of Main Street style parking as well as two lanes of traffic. But if you look further down Depot Street, where along this property's frontage, where there is a sidewalk, you know, I've seen cars parked there. So there will be on-street parking allowed all along Depot Street. It will just be parallel parking. And in terms of how many spaces, I'd need to see how far off of First Street you'd want to start the on-street parking, just in terms of that kind of the curve of the road and turning radius. But I think that you could easily get an additional 15 parking spaces along the new frontage improvements. So no, I don't think so.
Their trucks. SA, or the fueling company, their trucks, you see how wide they take that corner? They're parked down there.
And they actually hit the little
The little median.
Median all the time where the mailboxes are.
Wow. People forget that they put that median in the middle of the intersection, well, not dead middle, but close to the center of the intersection. And it has a median with a mailbox and curving
And a light pole.
Hand across walk. So the semis have to swing because they're double tankers. So they have to swing really wide.
Wow.
So the trucks are taking the curve really wide, just from people on Zoom who maybe can't hear. Yeah, there's a real congestion and parking issue on the west end of the property. Is that what I'm?
And we're trying to be helpful, not to hurt.
Not, you know, we don't, I'm not opposing or anything, just stating what's going to happen.
There are issues that we didn't know about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think, you know, we could certainly talk with the applicant. I mean, this is kind of a neighborhood parking management question, in my opinion. We didn't hear any comments from the school, so it's maybe something where, you know, we would collectively, you know, the city might reach out to the school, you know. The applicant is building the improvements to comply with the city's standards. The parking that exists now does not meet city standards. So I think, yeah, I'd be happy to reach out and talk to the school administration and see, you know, come up with a good idea for where staff could park if all of the other existing on-street parking and school parking lot spaces are full.
Right, because it seems to me that the staff has been parking kind of maybe illegally. No.
Yeah, I mean, it's nothing that we would necessarily
I'm sorry.
ticket or anything, but.
Am I able to say something that's broken?
So we're kind of a little off, um, off the strip, but it sounds, sounds like we maybe missed somebody who wanted to testify on the Zoom meeting.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes.
You may go.
Oh, this is Brooke, Rob Carlson's wife, on 41st Street, right across from the school. I just wanted to say that when they built the school and decided to reverse it and put it on our side over by the Public Works Building, they did a traffic study to figure out how to make the parking lane to wait for the students to pick them up. And they decided to wrap it around the east side, which is our side of the street. And that goes all the way around halfway down Depot on the busy days, sometimes all the way down Depot around the school. And so that can get pretty congested. All the cars that are across the street parking on your private property that has been sold, it was agreed upon early on when the school was being put together. You'll have to look at the meeting minutes. But they said that the teachers were welcome to park there, that staff was welcome to park there for the time being. So there's about 15 to 25 cars there at all times. All the parking lots are full and all the parallel street parking around the school has been filled. Which prevents a problem for the school, not for you, but.
Who made this agreement? The school was being built over on our side because they moved it from where it was before.
Previous owners of this site made that agreement.
Yeah.
Right, it sounds like the school and the previous owners had an informal agreement to allow cars to park partially on their property.
Right, and that was for the time being and that time is no longer being. Right? Okay.
Well, they use it every day. I mean, they're always there.
So they're going to use it.
If staff is willing to reach out to the school and have a chat.
They, they park in front of our house, too.
Right. Okay, well, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Applicant is still trying to answer these questions. Sorry.
The question from Clancy Transport about their tenant parking there, I'm going to see if Rod has any insight into that one.
Rod's on Zoom.
Yeah.
This is Rod. Yeah, Jeff, I don't have specific information. This is new. But as far as a tenant lease and that space, I don't know the terms of the lease. I'd have to look at that document and see. But it sounds like it's just terminating that lease.
Wow, okay.
Rod, would you be willing to get that information to staff? And if the person who testified wanted to reach out to staff, we could connect the two of you perhaps to provide some information on the lease termination.
Right.
Sure, I'd be willing to do that.
Thank you. Do we know the timeline for when this is going, the construction is going to be done?
We don't have a firm schedule. We still need to do the detailed design on the building inside and give through building permit and everything. You know, so at the soonest, it would probably be happening, you know, towards the end of this year, but we're getting into the web season then, so.
Yeah.
Not sure.
Okay, so do you think that maybe the tenant has a few months?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And, yeah, I, I don't know anything about this, unfortunately. I, I wish I did.
Cool.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Rod.
You're welcome.
Any other answers? Were those all the questions? We have a question here.
Well, I can hold off until it's the commissioner's comment section, I guess.
Okay.
And the press for the meeting.
Well, so if the applicant is done rebutting all of the issues that have been raised, then it is final questions from the planning commission. So you may go.
I may go. Did you want to go first to your question? Okay. So the first question I have is, what's your name again?
Jeff, Rob Field.
So Jeff, is there any storage space in this building?
As in general storage or?
Not just office storage. I'm talking material storage.
Oh, no.
So there's not going to be material deliveries to this building other than office supplies.
Right.
Like gas.
Yeah, no petroleum products. Of course, you, okay, thank you. And I'm sure they wouldn't wear that anyway. So that answers questions two and three. Then I have to say no. For the school, individuals interested in the parking. So the current parking for the school as designed is not sufficient. Is that correct?
Thank you.
Okay, and there's no area on school grounds to reappropriate for, say, 20 more parking spots?
Kids parking and where they do their sports.
Like off of Main Street, maybe?
That's correct. Not on Main Street. It's full.
Well, no, I'm talking like if you were to repurpose some green space and put it into parking, there's nothing that can be done there?
Brass, maybe a soccer field out.
Well, not the soccer field, obviously.
That's it. That's all that's left.
You could potentially take the north end of First Street that dead ends into the railroad tracks and take that street, which is highlighted in dark green right there. You could turn that into parking since it's a dead end. That would help keep some of the riffraff out of there, too.
I guess my concern here is not necessarily for the I'm concerned that poor planning by the school district or whatever it is to facilitate appropriate staff parking, because it's obviously not a high school. We're not going to see kids parking here. That to facilitate staff parking has caused an issue because you were given a, oh, don't worry about it, you know, you can go ahead and park here because it's no big deal. But see, now that lease is up, you have new owners of that property. And my guess is there's nothing in any lease agreement that specifies an agreement between the school district and the tenant, the current owner of the property, for you to park there. It was just like, hey, well, it's no big deal. We're not using them. Ergo, causing the problem that the city and these individuals, it's really not their issue. It's a school district issue that should have been part of the and feeling for you, it really is. But.
Well, I mean.
Well, we brought that up when the school, we were at the meeting for the school when it was going to be built and the city.
And now they're going to probably hire more kids or more teachers, because there's going to be more kids, because on the north side of Sandy, you just there's 258 apartments that are being finished up right now.
Yeah.
And so there's going to be more kids going to that school.
And the new ones that are on the other end of 220, 30 Malzey, that just weren't built as well.
And so there's going to be more foot traffic, more bicycle traffic.
Kids.
That 220, 30 can't handle that. And there's no bike.
Oh, we know. Oh, we, we. That's a different issue.
Every building project is a pretty problem.
I'm feeling for you, you, I really do. My, my concern here is that just to be fair, it's a school board issue.
Yeah.
And a school's issue, and maybe a city issue in some aspect. But everything else about this, I mean, my, by reviewing this, and I reviewed this last night at some extent, and by the work that Alex and Sarah have done, and the applicants have dotted all their i's and crossed all their t's. We've given them the notice, the property's being, oh, let me finish my thought. Property's being used appropriately. Somebody's going to lose out because it was being used as a freebie for parking. So, and I'm sorry to go ahead.
That's okay. I understand what you're, I totally get what you're saying. But what is our then? Because the teachers now park in front of our houses that eliminate our parking. My husband has a van that he has to park in the front of our house. Or his work van plus our vehicles that we own are in our driveway. I mean.
I, no, I, you know, I feel, I feel, I really, I get everything you're saying.
Park here.
Everything you're saying is, if I was living there, is, to me, is bad. But they, you know, they did their traffic.
Legally.
Yeah, they did their traffic evaluation. It's nothing that's, that everything they've done meets city codes. My suggestion, I can, now, just off the top of my head is, one, these are things that could be brought up at the, I'm assuming this is a Reynolds School Board issue? Is it Reynolds? So this is a Reynolds school. I would definitely bring this up. And two, there's definitely a vote coming up for new board members of Reynolds School Board. I would guess you read, read their bios and see where they stand on certain issues. But I think this is a really, taking your concerns, it's really a school board issue, and they need to work with the city and whatever to.
They don't care because it doesn't matter what. We say they're going to do what they want to anyways, which it's proven they did, so.
And that breaks my heart for you all, but.
As many times as I want to, but it's hard, so.
So I just want you to know that, you know, we're not heartless up here and we get where you're coming from.
I appreciate that.
But especially if I lived where you live, I would be. I just don't, I don't think this is, I don't think this is a dog that we're going to fight at this level. I mean, you can go to a council meeting and bring it up to them, you know, this is, they're going to have to eventually approve this based on our recommendations. And you can try that. But this is, this is not a fight we can take because it's, I hope you understand, it's not a, it's not a planners or city planning or planning commission issue.
Yeah, no, I.
Your, your concerns are our concerns, but because they've done everything right and
There's not much we can.
I mean, if there was something that required variance or something that's, and there is a couple of things here that does, but they're, they're so minute and it's not.
Right, I understand.
This doesn't require variance. What we're talking, the general plan doesn't require variance. So your, your heartfelt concerns are just not.
No, it's fine. I get what you're saying. Totally get it. I got it.
Okay.
Do we have other questions? No? Steve?
I heard mention that on that dead end on First Street, I can't see a very good zoomed in picture of that at that particular point. What's that currently used for?
Nothing.
It's.
It is an un, it's an unapproved gravel section of the right way.
It's actually city property.
It's First Street.
Yeah.
It is, would be First Street at any point anywhere.
Yeah.
It is.
Yep.
Yeah, but that puts it in the purview of being a city street. That what it's. Is there any potential for that being turned into parking?
Parallel.
I need to discuss that with our public works director, because that falls under that division. So yes, one question would be, would there be sufficient circulation for vehicles to park and get in and out? Because there's not really an exit being a dead end, and there's not really a hold the fact space on the north end of that. So, you know, that's one thing.
on the north end of that. So, you know, that's one thing, the physical space, and then the other would just be the use of the property. So I can't, I can't answer that for sure at this time.
Just curious, are those properties adjacent to the First Street in that area east of the proposed project site? Can't tell from the view, are they private property, obviously? And are they occupied? Is there anything built on them?
Yeah, there's houses. There are two homes. The one closest to First Street, as I understand it, is vacant, kind of abandoned.
Yep.
And the one that's to the east is occupied.
Just curious, thank you for the clarification.
All right. Other questions?
I have a question. So opposite down that road on Depot, I actually own the property. It's on the map right there. But if I were to look at maybe offer now for like annex parking, who would I talk to about that? Would I do open a seventh and Depot?
Which lot deal? At Seventh and Depot?
Yes.
So I would say first come and talk to the city because the use of a property is depend, I don't know if it's a vacant lot or what, but we first need to look at the land use and the zoning and what's allowed there. So, yeah, because it starts with us.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just thinking I could sell my, to make a double, a double stack garage. That'd be pretty cool.
Other questions up here? No? Yes, no?
Nope.
Okay. Let's see. Well, then we would close the public testimony and deliberate and approve or whatever we decide to do. So if there's other questions, we won't do that yet, but... All right. I'm going to close the public testimony. So now we discuss and deliberate. You have a lot of thoughts over here?
No, I don't. Any questions I had, I answered after I finished reading everything. My concern again is that, and this is all hindsight, that my concern is, I want to take their position here is that there was a total lack of planning on the school board or whatever when they built the school for...
Well, the school's been there for a long time.
Exactly. It's all hindsight that, I mean, they, you know, I don't know how much parking they put in the school for staff. And, you know, I understand that staff and schools grow, its population's grow, but I'm concerned that...
Right.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think there's anything we can do about it. I had my reservations about, you know, people in the neighborhood and the traffic and I understand the traffic report was done and it's all been going, but still, I think the school, am I right, Sarah? This is a school board issue, right? School district issue. Their parking on their property is a school district issue.
It is. It would be a parking management issue, but I'm sure that when the building was built, I didn't work here when the school, the new school got approved, but, you know, they would have needed to demonstrate a rationale for their parking and need parking requirements, but, you know, things change with staffing and so they're maybe, you know, struggling with finding space. But again, it's a little bit more, yes, of a Fairview Elementary School parking management question.
Right.
Yeah, they need to do some carpooling. That would be my recommendation is to look harder into carpooling. I mean, not to like beat the social spots, like...
The original school was there for years.
Yeah.
And they did expansion about 20 years ago. I can't remember exactly when, when they doubled the size of the elementary school, but back in the old days, I've here, lived here for 30-plus years. There was hard to find a place to park in front of the school anyway, but...
Yeah, I used to walk past there before they built the new school.
Yeah.
I've walked around that whole super block. Yeah.
So it just, obviously, it's something they dealt with and decided wasn't a problem or...
Right. I mean, like, if angry neighbors start showing up to school board meetings.
That's true.
They might change their ways. I don't know.
But if they're looking at the site plans, there's not a lot they can do about it.
Right, yeah. And this applicant is across the street from there. And I'm also like kind of sad that there's like a renter on the property who didn't know what was going to be happening to their business. So, yeah, there's, there's some due diligence that didn't get done somewhere along the way. I don't know who, but, yeah, that's, that's a shame. But we're deliberating and on the merits of the project itself, like I've looked at the drawings and read everything here and the project looks great. I mean, I think the building will fit in next to the school. I think it's a nice looking building and it's better than what was there before when I walked around it, which was nothing. I haven't walked past when there have been trucks, but, yeah.
Yeah, I agree that the t's have been crossed and the i's have been dotted. And my concern at this point is this gentleman's agreement, which isn't worth papers written on, quite honestly, that somebody's going to try to hold all of this up with litigation because of the fact that it's been, you're going to say it's been grandfathered in.
That's a fun observation.
Yeah, that's just a thought.
Yeah. Well, on that happy note. Do we have more discussion?
And Roger on Zoom, feel free to hit my pin.
Yeah.
So I see nothing wrong with what's, what's been presented. I think they did a really good job with their plans and, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, with their plans. As far as the tenant situation, that's between the owner and the tenant. And I think in a lot of these situations, you don't know if you're going to be able to get anything approved. So as far as notifying the tenant, sometimes it's alarming the tenant before it's time. But that's a, that's an owner-tenant problem. So I don't think it's really, I mean, it's something we can, we can have feelings for, be concerned about, but it's not our, it's not our horse to ride. As far as the parking goes, this happens all the time. The things are promised years and years ago and they come into a situation where something new is developed and the people that have parked and been a part of it have to then figure out what to do with their parking and property. It's sad, but it's part of the development process. So I see everything that I've looked at and continue to look at as being in good shape.
Thank you, Roger.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Well, do I hear a motion?
One other comment.
Okay.
Based upon the merits of the Appheus project here, I think they've, as we've pointed out, dotted all the i's, crossed all the t's. The research has been done. They comply with everything that's necessary to be able to get the conditional approvals and the variances. That being said, I don't see any reason for holding up the project because it has met those merits. But it would have to behoove the school district to take an early, advanced look at what their needs are because you do point out there's going to be an increase in attendance at these schools. And the options are going to be, A, does the school have the capacity to be able to receive that many new students? I don't know. The school district would know. And they're going to have to do some planning. They need to get a jump ahead on what is going to be necessary to be able to meet the demand of greater attendance to the schools. And touch base with the city and the planning department to be able to make those adjustments. I look at things as being necessary to look ahead so that we can avoid these kind of problems. There's really no reason for the school district not to have known with the notifications that have been given, not only in the newspaper but posted, to be able to be here in advance of even this meeting to have that discussion on what we're going to do about those 25 parking spaces that are now going to go away. There are options, but none of which we can address at this particular meeting at this time.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you for taking it into consideration. We appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you, Steve. That's a very good point. Notice was posted to the site.
That's correct. And the school board was also sent a mail notice as well.
Okay, yeah, so...
See, I make a motion that we approve the application based on the findings of compliance with city regulations and conditions of approval.
All right, well, we have a motion and some seconds to approve the application based on the findings of compliance with city regulations and conditions of approval. Should we do a roll call? Sure. All right. Commissioner Do?
Yes.
Commissioner McGarrett?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Aaron.
Commissioner Walters?
Yes.
Yes.
And Sheriff Wilkman? Yes, I, yeah, okay. Approved, thank you. Good luck. My heart goes out to you and you as well.
Thank you.
The project is approved and we look forward to seeing what happens. Oh, now we have, we have a whole other thing to talk about. So unless you also want to hear about the Village General Standards.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
If any of the applicants want to follow with city staff, please reach out to us. Our contact information is on the city's website.
Thank you.
And then you can get the notice you received of the meeting today.
I'm pretty sure that they know how to get in touch with you. All right.
Okay.
We have a legislative hearing. Shall I read the thing?
I'm going to check in the next group meeting out here.
I can read the thing while you do that. She hasn't said yes, so I'll go. Okay. She's nodding now, okay. The public hearing on ordinance 03-2025 and land use file 252025-13-ta is called to order. The proposed amendment for discussion this evening is an ordinance in the City of Fairview Municipal Code, Chapter 19.1.0, Village General Standards, 19.164 Vehicle and Bicycle Parking, and the Fairview Comprehensive Plan to Remove Parking Mandates for Compliance with Oregon Climate-Friendly and Equitable Communities Rules. Conduct of hearing. The order of business we will follow in conducting this hearing will be, A, staff report, B, correspondence, C, public testimony, D, additional staff comments, E, questions from the commission, F, hearing closed, no further testimony from the audience, G, discussion by commission and recommendation. Any interested person may present testimony concerning the proposed amendments. Testimony. When you come to the podium, please state your name and mailing address for the record as this hearing is being recorded. Disclosure. At this time, I would like to ask members of the commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. These indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact, bias, or conflict of interest, and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Well, everybody's shaking their head now. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge any commission members in partiality?
We lost our audience.
We lost our audience. Are you a part of the audience? No.
Yeah.
Good. Staff report. City staff will now give us the staff report.
Hi, good evening, commissioners. The item before you is the CFAC Parking Mandates text amendment. The proposed text amendment, as you all have had several work sessions on, is regarding removing the minimum off-street parking requirement citywide and all of the other references kind of scattered throughout the development code as well as the comprehensive plan that reference a minimum amount of off-street parking from our documents. The applicable criteria is 19.205 amendments, 19413 type 4 procedures, and 19.470 for land use district map and text amendments. A notice was posted in the outlook on April 2nd. The required 35-day notice to DLCD and Metro on March 18th was sent. And by noon today, we received no written testimony on the application. So some background about this that you guys are all very familiar with is the CFAC rulemaking went into effect in 2022 with the goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions through the set of three different phases regarding EV charging, parking lot trees, solar panels, the fee in lieu, and other parking mandates that would be applicable. So the city has already adopted the first two of those. This is the final third phase of the CFAC rulemaking. The, there was three options provided. The first option was the remove all parking minimums citywide, whereas the second and third option were that combination of parking policies, reduced regulations. And the work session with both the commission as well as the council, they decided that the other two options were just too burdened. Some, there would cost a lot of staff time and it would just be a lot to have to make those type of options work. So ultimately, based off of the evidence provided, that they decided that the first option would be the easiest path to take. And just as a refresher, so currently the outlined area in red as the cream-colored area, everything north of Gleason and essentially kind of south and including some properties along Sandy, we currently do not require any off-street parking as it is, and that's been in effect since January of 2023. The areas where parking for certain uses is still required is everything north of that red boundary, outlined in the different zoning colors there. Those areas are mostly built out with, you know, single-family residences, multifamily uses, industrial, open spaces around mostly, you know, north of Blue Lake. So the opportunity for a new development to go in with, you know, parking was fairly limited as most has already, most of the land there has already been developed. So that's kind of what went into the thinking of removing parking mandates citywide. As far as impacting goes, it really wouldn't have been a big deal, whereas, you know, we, developers here are going to probably provide an appropriate amount of parking anyways, just because the market dictates, you know, if you're looking to see sales, say apartment units to people that are all, you know, typically having cars against public transit, it's not as, you know, available out here, they're going to provide those because they are trying to ultimately sell a product and people are less likely to rent something if they know that they don't have vehicle parking spaces. So in an area like this, it's, you know, reasonable to assume that developers would provide an appropriate amount of parking. So that was something we had communicated to you guys in the council and kind of went into making the decision that removing parking minimums wouldn't be a huge impact to us. So going over the draft code amendments, so the, most of the parking standard language was in 19.164. There is a lone reference in the Village General Standards that had to be removed. So as you can see in the red-stricken language, it referred to all base zone parking standards shall apply. See the parking chapter. We've stricken that out and just replaced it that it's been repealed by this ordinance. That was the only mention in all of the other zoning districts. Everything else was contained into that one chapter, which is the 19.164, which is our vehicle and bicycle parking. So we've removed the entirety of subsection A. That was kind of put into place from parts of the first two CFAC requirements that had used spaces as well as, you know, your references to certain corridors and affordable housing units and certain uses that we weren't able to have parking minimums. to have parking minimums on already. So we've replaced that subsection with the one-liner that just states that there's no minimum off-street parking requirements for new developments. And then just initially, right below that subsection A is where most of the changes are going to be happening. So in the table that you see here, we have our minimum, followed by two columns for maximums. We've essentially just removed the entirety of the minimum. You still have to follow parking maximums that are required, and everything else as far as your, you know, dimensional space requirements, parking lot standards and stuff like that, all of those are going to remain. The main changes is just, we just do not require minimum off-street parking anymore. And then moving over to the comprehensive plan, so there are four specific references in our comp plan that talk about off-street parking, and they're actually essentially kind of duplicates of each other. So in chapter three, it references that off-street parking shall be required, talking about, you know, commercial areas. And then the second use is a policy that says all commercial development shall have off-street parking consistent with local and mandated regional standards. We felt that that was a little repetitive because if you had left it in, they would assume that there is some sort of a minimum off-street parking requirement, just reading that. So we felt removing that reference, since we don't have any parking minimums, that is the local and regional standard. So those were both repeated in chapter 14, which is kind of the summary of all of those. So those are the only references within our comp plan that had, you know, mentioned anything about off-street parking requirements. So our recommendation is that the commission recommend approval to city council of the proposed amendments as shown in attachment A and B to the ordinance. And I just wanted to touch on the actual, like, structure of how the CFAC rulemaking is listed within the state requirements was, the very first subsection says if you repeal all of your parking mandates, you are no longer subject to the two different Oregon administrative rules that have the other parking requirements that are kind of underneath that. So it just stops at just that one. If we do remove those, that's kind of the rule, that, how they set that up. Yeah, that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So have we received any correspondence on this matter, other than those items included in the agenda materials?
We received comment from DLCD that they had reviewed the amendments, and they were okay with what had been proposed, and Metro did not provide any comments on this.
Excellent. All right, well, with that aside, does anyone wish to speak in support of the amendments? Nobody's here. Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the amendments? Unless somebody's on Zoom. Is anybody on Zoom?
I do not believe, I do not believe anyone is left on Zoom for the rest of the meeting agenda, but oops.
And Row East is here.
I think we've got one, one holdover from the last hearing, but nobody here.
Okay. Is there any further testimony or any further questions from the audience? Nobody's here. Does the staff have anything to add which specifically addresses a question raised during the testimony? No questions were raised. Does any member of the commission have any questions regarding clarification of the testimony to this point?
No, I think that horse died a long time ago.
We discussed it ad nauseam.
In my opinion, I agree. If there are no further questions, I will close the public testimony portion of this hearing. All right. The public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. Oh, now I'm supposed to gavel. I did that already. Is there discussion by the commission? No. 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 So, alternative motions provided on the staff report. We consider the ordinance. Does anyone wish to make a motion?
I move that we recommend the city, that the city council adopt ordinance 032025 based on the staff recommended code amendments in attachment A and...
B. A and B. Oh.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. The box is covering up part of the voting here, so if it's possible to move the, the box.
Roger's still there.
Okay. So we have a, a motion and a second to recommend city council adoption of ordinance 03-2025 with the staff recommended code amendments in attachment A and B to the ordinance. Shall we do a roll call?
Tom said. Commissioner Dew.
Aye.
Commissioner Mondaro.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Hooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Walters.
Yes.
And Chair Holcomb.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Cracks. Thank you, everybody. So, quantitative agenda.
Okay, great. The next planning commission meeting is May 27th, so day after Memorial Day. And one of the things that's been kind of off the agenda with a question mark for a while has been the FEMA model ordinance related to the post-implementation compliance measures, and we've been sort of pending some information from our city attorney's office with some recommendations, and they do now have some additional information. So I think we will bring that for a work session at your meeting on May 27th, as well as a work session on the plan to bring forward some tree-related code amendments and projects. So those would be the two, the two primary items coming forward to you in May. We do, we did receive a land use application from Heidelberg Materials for the aggregate terminal and concrete batch plants on the Columbia River north of Marine Drive. That will not be ready for hearing in May, but we're looking at potentially June for that public hearing, as well as in June, the Palsy Amendments to the Transportation System Plan, once we can get that document and graphics and everything updated.
Oh, that's exciting.
Okay. So, and otherwise, I don't think we have any updates on other land use applications that we've received. The AD Truck Services expansion is now in review for getting building permits, so they're moving along. And so, yeah, I think that's, I think those are the updates for now.
Okay. Um, that's the tentative agenda and staff updates, apparently. Do we have commission updates? No? Nope. Not here? Okay. Anything else?
I'll just make one other little staff update. We now have a, a department administrative assistant for community development, so someone who transferred up from downstairs at City Hall. So Anastasia is going to be supporting the work, helping get our planning commission meeting set up, and helping work on meeting minutes. So we'll continue bringing forward. Alex put together the last meeting minutes, which were great, but we will be getting caught up with meeting minutes from this year and bringing those forward to the next meeting.
I have to say that having a human doing the meeting minutes is preferable to AI minutes, because we experienced some AI minutes in some other committees, and there were a lot of errors, and we don't want that here.
Thank you.
A ton.
Yes, yes. So Alex did a great job. Thank you. All right. If that's all, I'm open to a motion to adjourn.
So move.
So seconded.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
See you next time, Roger.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
All right. My glasses case today, so I'm getting my hair stuff on my glasses.